Okay, well, I have seven o'clock. All right, all the meeting order, we'll call a roll.
Mayor Patricelli.
Present.
Councilman Torncello.
Present.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Present.
We'll say the first order of business right now, we'll all stand please and we'll say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands under our nation, under God, indivisible, everyty, and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you. Well, we have the agenda tonight, and anybody else is on, I appreciate you tuning in, so to speak, for tonight's meeting. We'll start with the reports of officers and committees.
Your honor, before we do that, would you like to do the minutes of the previous meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead. Motion.
I'll make a motion to dispense with the reading of the previous minutes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, call a roll.
Councilman Torncello.
In favor.
Councilwoman Diamond.
Favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
In favor. Okay, now we'll go to reports of office committees. Who wants to start?
I'll be brief, and I'll let Mark take right over. Admiral Cleaners, we got everything finally through the, we got the budding property up to code, and DEC has selected a date of May 4th to start the demolition of Admiral Cleaner. We, the demolition company asked if we had any interest in keeping the sign for Admiral Cleaner, so I reached out to Tom Raghusta at the Historical Society, he is very interested, so they're going to take it down for us at the demolition crew, and DPW will go pick that up, and we'll house it in the church until we could find a better location. Tom was very interested, as he has a couple other signs from businesses that have been in the city for a long period of time, so this will be another part of the collection. As for next week's meeting, we're going to have two components on projects that members of the the team have been working on, the DRI, the Downtown Revitalization Initiative. We've been reviewing a draft with Chazen over the past few days, and we've made final edits as of yesterday. So next week, we'll have a presentation with them, I'll work with Mark on getting a power presentation up and ready, and Chazen representatives Norabel and Chris Rounds will be there to do that presentation. And the next action you'll take next week as well is the micro enterprise. We're going to take a seeker action on that, we've been working diligently with the state for a funding program. The details are to be worked out at this time, but once we do that, we'll have we'll have a further explanation, explanation at next meeting. Any questions of me?
No, 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 that sounds good. Joe, what's the status of the comp plan?
The comp plan, I've gone through the comp plan at this point in time, it made several commentaries that I need to now sit with Chazen and work through, and then we'll assemble a team mayor and then go forward with kicking that one off as well. But there's a number of things I'm looking at from a zoning perspective, and a few other design standard mechanisms that I'll need to go in. One of the things I'm looking at too is also creating either a zoning committee or what we'll call, let's say, a land use law is the acronyms that I used to know up in the town, but one that can actually go through and review both the comprehensive plan as well as the laws that allow us to develop within the city, see where some complexities happen to be, and then we'll meet with the planning board members in order to make recommendation as to changes for the council to then review, consider, and adopt.
Hey, Joe, I think I've asked this before, but I, my memory is kind of, I'm losing it. Is the demolition at Admiral Cleaner is going to create a problem with traffic on 19th Street?
I know the chief is on as well, and I think, Mark, you might have been involved, and Dave, you might have been involved as well with it. One of the things they're going to do, Peter, is, is they're going to try to use the alleyway, you know, as some staging area, they're also going to be blocking off to the curb, not the street as well. The only thing we did learn the other day is the agreement that they had with Price Chopper to park their construction people and everything to park was lost. So Paul was trying to reach out to to the Lalo's and a few of the other areas to try to see if we could find a staging area. We also asked the chief if we could take portions of the bulbout area where you got angled parking and put in parking there for it, but there should be no disruption on 19th Street based on what we're told.
Okay, and is there, is there a ballpark figure for how long this project is going to take?
The last I heard is probably going to be all of about three, four weeks, and then they get to, you know, clean that up, but the real work will be later on when they have to get underneath that slab and start removing all that from, you know, the contamination component.
Right, okay, thank you.
Me, Mark, I think now you want, is you going to do the FERC component here?
Hey, Mark, before you go into, before you go into the FERC, you mentioned about the tree, you have a tree committee report, I know you have a meeting on Monday, right?
That's correct. Meeting on Monday is discussing the trees for the bike path, that's the main piece of the meeting.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. One thing that came up from a code enforcement, that's why I'm further trying to consider this law review. About planting trees in the right way is not specific.
No, I hate, I hate to interrupt, but I think Councilwoman Diamond is having a little problem with her, with her computer, and I'm not sure that she's on right now. Could we, could we just sort of make sure that she's on board before we continue? Barb, are you there?
Looks like she's frozen.
Yeah. Okay.
She just called me prior, let me see if I can get her on.
The technology is good, but.
Yeah.
Hi. No, I'm not, I was just texting Kate to say that you let them know they've got a problem, I don't know what my problem is, my computer doesn't feel.
I can hear you now, Barb.
I, right.
So, Joe.
Yes.
I was twelve, I was twelve o'clock high.
I just finished it this afternoon. Right up to when.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, go ahead, Mark.
Uh, yeah, I did my tree committee thing, Joe had a question.
Oh, yeah, so, Mark, one of the things came up, Paul got a call from a resident who wanted to plant a new tree. The code is pretty, in fact, very specific as to replacement, but nothing specifically that says a new tree. These are one of the laws that we need to revisit, you know, as we look through the land use law committee, but when you're there tomorrow with it, if you could look at that ordinance or that code on it, because she wants to place it in the right of way in between the curving and the sidewalk, but it's not enough for a new tree, and I know the tree committee came throughout the city and planted trees before, but what I do know is some, a majority of those were replacement. That could be a discussion point I greatly appreciate it, then we can get back to the resident and see if we could allow this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure.
What's that, mayor?
What's that, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the FERC relicensing process that we're in right now, we've, we've, I've had some conversations, Michelle Stotler, who is our consultant on the FERC relicensing through Gomez and Sullivan. So, we obviously got new task orders based on what Michelle believes we're going to have to do going forward as far as the relicensing process. Some of this is going to get into the weeds, but the reason I'm doing this is because obviously when we get into the weeds about this, we're talking about some dollar amounts that I think everybody needs to be aware of. So, as we move forward here, if I can get this PowerPoint to move forward. So, on Monday, March 2nd, City Water Fleet through our engineering firm of Gomez and Sullivan submitted the license application for the hydro plant in the town of Gildan. It was submitted after several attempts, and, you know, we made attempts to settle with Gildan on this unsuccessfully because we had some significant pushback with DEC, with the town of Gildan, coincidentally, and Fish and Wildlife. And the reason for the settlement is because you tried to bring all the parties that are involved in the licensing portion of this to the table to try to make some concessions as to what they may require as part of the FERC relicensing, and it really gives us to, gives us the opportunity to maybe minimize or mitigate some of the costs that are involved in some of these more costly studies that either group may want us to do. There's, you know, obviously issues raised from, you know, fish and wildlife as to, you know, the existence of fish there and how we let the fish operate inside the, inside the the facility itself. Some pushback from the town of Gildan as it relates to recreation and having the ability to have some recreation trails there. And DEC is really the driver of some of the issues because they're very specific as to what they want the reservoir to be used for and from a habitat standpoint, how we protect it. So each task order that was submitted by Gomez and Sullivan is based on studies, observations, and some desktop calculations that they will, they believe that they're going to have to perform moving forward as part of the licensing process. And if anybody has any questions, please feel free to stop me, and I'm going to be honest with you, in order for me to see the presentation in full, I had to drop the cameras out, so I can't see you. So, you know, just yell out if you have a question at any point in the process here. The total price of the new task orders that were submitted through, from Gomez and Sullivan is $380,000. We've spent so far on the relicensing process about $36,600. Now, this project, from the FRB standpoint, FRB gave us money to pursue both of these projects. So, when I say both of the projects, the first is the FERC relicensing project, and then the second is the interconnect for the hydro, which allows us to run the hydro and get full power, full capacity out of the hydro, which allows us to sell more power back to National Grid, which obviously in turn increases our revenue. So there's two processes that are going on at the same time, the majority of that $36,000 is of the interconnect project, not necessarily just the relicensing process. So, the studies and the proposed task orders, I'm sorry.
The $380,000 is, is the task orders from this point forward, or the, the task orders, all, all task orders together?
No, this is this point forward.
This point forward, right, okay.
So the task orders are broken down into three basic elements, what they feel they're going to have to from the settlement standpoint, which is everybody coming back to the table, the settlement stopped, and we just submitted our application for the license. And just to reiterate, the reason we go through the settlement process is, is we try to mitigate what we think each entity will have, will ask us to do through FERC. FERC really drives this, but they decide what we should do, and FERC is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. They'll decide what we need to do as part of the relicensing process. But each one of these entities is a stakeholder in this process, so they have the ability to hold some of their requirements over our, to FERC, and FERC may make us do what they ask us to do. So when we talk about the settlement process, we try to, we try to mitigate and minimize what we will have to do in order to meet the requirements for the relicensing process. So that's the settlement process. The second phase is the relicensing studies, and I'll get into the, go ahead.
Mark, did the settlement negotiations end because you reached an impasse? You, you know, you, you got to the point where it wasn't going to be productive anymore?
You know, really, to be honest with you, Pete, I wasn't involved in it, but the, the feedback that the mayor, Joe and I got from Michelle, who was, you know, obviously our lead at the settlement negotiations, was that they brought different people to the table, we were moving in a good, at a good pace, and we had we had a good plan going forward, and then they brought new people to the table and at the 11th hour, and it really fell apart from that point. Where there were things that were part of the settlement process that DEC was going to pay for, or the town of Gildan was going to pay for, when these new parties came to the table, it became a demand that the city paid for these items that they wanted us to do. So at that point, myself, Charles, and Joe said, you know, we're done with settlement, let's move forward, let's go with the relicensing and see where it falls.
Okay, so that was a, okay, that's, that answers, that's, that's a good answer.
Okay. So the relicensing studies are studies that we know that we're going to have to do as part of the relicensing, and we won't want to start doing them now. Some of these relicensing studies are based, are timing based, so there are certain seasons that you have to perform these studies. So we know that we're not going to be able to wait until FERC decides, we know that there's things that we're going to have to do, and these studies will have to do sooner rather than later, and this is kind of the move forward process as far as the relicensing goes. And then the post-licensing support, and that's the continuation of these studies that may be two or three years down the road, that FERC is going to mandate that we do, and how do we perform them moving forward? So, as far as it goes, the task order for settlement negotiations and agreements are around $22,000. The charges are incurred through conversations with the stakeholders that are at the, at the settlement table. DEC, US Fish and Wildlife, and the town of Gildan are really the major entities that we have conversations back and forth, and we get demands, and, and we try to, you know, negotiate back and forth on the best way to get to the end product. The benefit of the settlement negotiations, and this can't be overlooked, is that the city may be able to answer concerns of the stakeholders outside of the FERC agreement, so that means that we might be able to make an agreement with these entities individually, and they will make sure that they don't bring this to FERC and make it a mandate out of FERC because we make an agreement between ourselves and DEC or Fish and Wildlife, that these are things that we're going to do. Couldn't mitigate the issues, and it certainly couldn't mitigate.
I thought the settlement option had, had reached an impasse, and we, we're not going to pursue any further settlement.
We don't know at this point, we're waiting for DEC, we had some conversations with DEC that the people that were at the table that were making the high demands were people that weren't necessarily approved to be at that table. So DEC has asked us to come back to the settlement table, which we certainly have time to do, but we're trying to get some feedback as to now, okay, if this isn't the guy, where are we? Are we moving back in time, and are we starting all over again, or are we going to just pick up the ball where we left off? So we're waiting for that information to kind of filter out.
Thank you.
Just to let you know too, the, we had contacted John McDonald, and he kind of like brokered a a conversation with the higher ups with DEC, and we had a few conversations about that, those type of demands. So, it, it seemed to be somebody who was running rogue.
Okay, well, good, I'm, I'm, that's, I'm good, I'm happy to, I'm happy to learn that we haven't closed, closed off that option, or that, or stopped pursuing that avenue yet, that's good, that's good to hear.
But the only, the one thing is that what we were doing is we, we felt that we, and I don't know how to say it, but felt that we're being bullied, and it was just a take it or leave it type of, of a, you know, conversation around the table. I wanted to enjoy going back to that, that conference table, but it was best felt that we moved forward.
That's, that's great, that's a strategic decision, and that's, I think that's, that's fine, that's, that's good.
So, as part of the settlement, some of the topics that came up were, and you're going to have to bear with me here, eel passage, minimum flow, water quality, and recreation plan, these were all topics that have come up during, during the previous negotiations, the most contentious has really been the recreation plan. But, you know, we're, we're trying to work this stuff out because we think really the path of least resistance is to go to settlement rather than everything getting pushed to FERC, and then FERC makes the decision as to what we do and don't have to do. So the dollars again tied to that are around $22,000, $22,200. So, the relicensing study, and here's where we're going to get in the weeds, and I'm going to ask you to bear with me here a little bit. But these are requirements that we feel that we're going to have to do either at the settlement phase or when we get granted relicensing. It's an upstream eel sighting, so the best way for me to describe this is salmon swimming upstream, okay? The American eel does the same thing, they, they actually live in the ocean, but they spawn, and then they reach maturity in freshwater, and then they go back down into the ocean to spawn again. So the juvenile eels, once they spawn in the ocean, they traverse upstream, and you've seen the dam, and there's a picture of the dam behind this, this PowerPoint. It's a wall, it's a concrete wall that goes from, you know, where the, the water comes out for the hydro, there's a little spill area, but somehow the eels, the juvenile eels are getting upstream and up that wall and into the reservoir. Now, the reason we know that is because we have full grown eels in the reservoir, so we know they're getting there somehow. So what we have to do is, we have to do what they call an eel sighting study, which is, you know, biologist actually going out there at night trying to find how the eels are getting into the reservoir. Obviously, we know that they're getting in there, but we don't know how they're getting in there, so that's one of the studies that we have to do. Now, with COVID-19 going the way that it is and the restrictions as far as essential services, we don't know that this is something that we're going to be able to hit the timeframe on. Mid-April is really when we start to see the traversing upstream of these eels, and obviously at this point we're past that. So we don't think that we're going to be able to hit this timeframe this year. We haven't gotten any direction from DEC as to what their requirements are, if they see this as essential or non-essential. So we're really kind of tenuously waiting to see what their, their timeframe is. We did get some correspondence today, I just got them from Michelle in regards to the eel sightings, and they want us to install what they call eel mops, and basically what an eel mop is, is just like fake seaweed that you put into the shallower areas, and it gives the eels, the young eels, a place to hide so predators can't get to them and things like that, and that'll assist us, because what we do then is we just take that, and I really can't believe I'm having this conversation with you, but we actually take the eel mop, and we, we grab it from the water, and we dump it upside down, and all the eels fall out of it, and that's how we can count the eels and get a, you know, a sighting study on it, and we know that they're trying to traverse upstream. If you want me to move faster, I will, but I'm trying to get everybody a concept of kind of where we are. So we're still waiting from, from the state to get some direction as to when these studies can take place. So, one of the other studies is the water quality improvement field assessment. Now, what we look for is oxygen in the water, specifically dissolved oxygen, dissolved oxygen tells us that there's, the water is being oxygenated. Now, that does two things, it helps us from a fish and vegetation standpoint, because obviously if there's oxygen in the water, the plants and the fish need the oxygen in order to survive. We've, we've noticed through testing in the, in the last two years that the amount of dissolved oxygen in the water has dropped significantly. Normally, that's based on stratification. And what stratification is, is that, you know, based on where you are in the reservoir, the depth level, the deeper you go, the less amount of DO is there, dissolved oxygen. We're seeing dissolved, dissolved oxygen downstream, which is after it goes through, goes over the dam or or through the intake into the hydro and gets expelled, we're still seeing a low level of dissolved oxygen, which is disturbing from a fish and wildlife standpoint, but it's also something that we need to worry about from a water quality standpoint, we want to make sure that the, the quality of water that we have, that we get to, you know, our customers, City Water Fleet customers and beyond, is, you know, good quality. So, the low level of dissolved oxygen makes us to, forces us to add more chemicals into the water in order to improve the quality. So, less chemicals means less that you have to add, which is less expense at the end of the year, and higher water quality. So this is a very important study for us to, to undertake, not only from just a FERC standpoint, but also from a water quality standpoint on our, on our end. So, they want to test the stratification, which, you know, obviously is, they want to test it at the lower levels to see where the issue is. But one of the things is, is that if we're getting low levels of dissolved oxygen downstream, it's not because of stratification. We know that because the intake that brings the water into the hydro is relatively high, it's only around seven feet. So stratification and the lower levels of dissolved oxygen would be much deeper than that. So, the concern is, is that we have low levels of DO, very shallow, and that's something that we need to find out, number one, causing that, and number two, how do we fix it? So the, the studies for, for that are around $55,990. And, you know, I can get more specific as to how those are carved out, but, you know, when we talk about bringing biologists in to, to help us to understand what these water levels are, and all the associated staff that's involved in this, obviously the expense is going to go up. So, the, the third study here is called a hydrologic study. And basically, this is a study that tells us what our safety yield is, how much water can we lose on a daily basis in the reservoir yet still provide water to our customers? So, we're asked, we're getting asked this, to do this study by DEC, Department of Environmental Conservation, because they want us to provide. because they want us to provide one CFS, which is one cubic feet per second of flow downstream. So right now, the only water that we know of that goes downstream is anything that spills over from the reservoir. And then anything that goes through the hydro. They want us to additionally provide one CFS to increase the water flow to assist the downstream vegetation, the downstream fish. Our issue is, is we've never, we've never provided that. One of the things that we don't necessarily think that DEC or Fish and Wildlife or even Gildland, ironically enough, realizes is this is a drinking water supply. So, you know, the more money we, the more water we pump out, that's the less we have to contain to give to our residents and to give to the Water Fleet Arsenal, to the Town of Gildland. So what we need to do is, we need to figure out, can we, can we sustain one CFS spilling downstream every day in order to still be able to retain enough water to give to our customers? Now, there's a, there's a side benefit to this as well. As you know, we've recently signed agreements with the Village Manans, with the Village of Green Island. Village of Green Island one is still pending, to provide them additional water. Now, Green Island wants five hundred thousand gallons per day and Manans wants one point five. This will allow us to measure how much we can sustain if we decide at a point in time to market this to other municipalities. So there's, there's kind of a twofold benefit out of this study as well. Now, this study is a desktop study, so we can start this right away. Once we get the okay from the council to kind of move forward on this. This is a study that we can do right now because it's really based on maths and there was a prior hydrologic study that gives us the idea of the depth of reservoir and you start computing gallons and how many gallons per day we might be able to yield as part of this. So this COVID nineteen restrictions don't affect this portion of the process. Now, the third part of this is post filing support. And you've heard a lot about this issue in the past and it's something that's not going to fix itself. The mayor, Joe, and I had the the pleasure of speaking with Congressman Taco about this issue. And the issue specifically is water chestnuts and the water chestnut control plant. The water chestnuts are invasive plants and this is one of the things that we think is limiting, limiting the amount of dissolved oxygen in the water because these really choke off the surface of the water. On the left is a picture of the water chestnut plant itself and you can see all the the lily pads that are there. During the summer, these get to be almost an inch thick. So you know that no sunlight, it can pass through these these fields of pads. And it just gets larger and larger every year. Really, the best way for us to control this, you can either hand these or you can get a harvester. And the harvester and the hand harvester, what you do is you try to get it as close to the root as you can. These seeds on the right is really what you're looking for. You need to get the seeds because if you don't, they just regrow next year. Got a two phases here. So if you get the harvester or you hand harvest it, once you get all the chestnuts out, you have to bring them somewhere. You can't just let them float in the water because they'll just reggerminate and they'll start the process all over again. There's two ways to get rid of them, you can either bury them or you can burn them. And we really need to figure out, you know, moving forward, what our plan is here to to kind of allocate this this issue that we have with the water chestnuts because we really believe that this is one of the culprits as far as the DO. And we think that, you know, the oxygenation really makes us spend more money on chemicals to fix a problem that we wouldn't necessarily have to fix if we didn't have these. So the original plan, go ahead.
Does that process take any expertise? Or is that something that our our workers in the city could be trained to do and and could ultimately handle?
In the past, we've done it ourselves. And in talking to Dave Dressel and I'm sure Bill Ashline will will attest to this, that we used to pay guys eight hours a day to hang over the head, the front of a boat and cut these, harvest these, these, these water chestnuts. And it was, it was a overtime detail, eight hours a day, we'd have two guys out there harvesting these chestnuts. We believe at the point right now with that hand harvesting, we just don't have the time to do it, that we would actually have to get a harvester. The expertise there is operating in a harvester. As far as we know, from the videos that I've looked at, it's about an eight to ten hour training on how to do it, how to dump it. So we would have to, you know, obviously probably construct a dock somewhere that we can dock the harvester on and then we'd have to, you know, figure out where a dumping site would be. But it's, you know, the the county of Albany was originally intending on purchasing a harvester and our intent was to borrow theirs. But we don't know with, you know, the financial ramifications of COVID nineteen, if that's still on their their agenda list. So part of the conversation that we had with Congressman Taco, will you open up any revenue streams or steer us towards any grants that we might be able to to apply for in order to purchase our own harvester? So we're back to the eels here. This is a, the issue with the eels is the eels need to make it back downstream. The problem is that the eels are attracted to current and the only current that comes downstream is the is the intake for the hydro, which means that the eels would go through the hydro. Not good for anybody. So the way around this is
It'd become electric.
To, right. They've asked us to construct what they call a Conti airlift. And basically what it is, is it's a a false area of pressure that the the eels are attracted to and they're caught in a cage. And then we actually manually bring them downstream and really we've gotten prices up to two hundred thousand dollars to construct these. Dave Dressel said that we can do it, he can do it for far less than that. But we do believe that this is going to be something that we're going to have to do in order to move forward here. And, you know, as part of the relicensing. And then the downstream flow and maintaining that one CFS. So this picture here with the red circle, this is actually the dam itself, the top of the dam. And the flashboards at the top, and these flashboards actually contain probably another three feet of water. So it actually gives us more volume as it comes to, you know, giving water to Gildon, giving getting our own water. It gives us another three feet of volume. These are actually, you know, in, when the reservoir is high, they're they're really designed to fail. But you can see in some areas, they have failed a little bit and that provides some flow. But the original plan is for us to construct some kind of a spout or spillway in one of these flashboards to provide the the downstream flow that DEC is looking for. If that doesn't work and it doesn't meet it, if it comes out too fast and we're yielding too much water, the other option is to pump the water out where we would be able to control how much water is actually pumped out. We've also countered to say, you know, maybe we'll give you a certain amount of CFS after it rains or maybe, you know, in the the summer season where we don't necessarily run the hydro, we'll be able to, you know, take the money that usually goes through the hydro and and send it downstream. So we're still through settlement negotiations, we're still going through that. But this is, you know, one of the biggest areas of contention as far as the the post filing support. And we're back to the eels again, so this is a, this, somebody have a question?
Well, I was just going to say that if if we provide, if we accommodate them and provide the CFOs for them, is, does that limit the amount of electricity that we can sell and that limit, does that eliminate the the amount of water that's going over the dam and turning the turbines and all that?
I don't think that's really our concern, our concern is the safe yield as far as how much water can we draw for our drinking water system and for the town of Gildon's drinking water system. You know, the the effect to the hydro is minimal from the aspect that, you know, the the water flows in there because it's at a deeper level. So that water isn't really the water that we're talking about, we're talking about, you know, draining, you know, one CFS is five hundred thousand gallons per day, you know, and that's what Gild, that's what Green Island is looking for. So basically, we're spilling over Green Island's water supply every single day.
Thank you.
Sure. So if we find that there's eels and they're getting upstream, the the eel sighting survey, we have to figure out how they're doing it. And then, once we figure that, DEC may come back to us and say we have to, they have some kind of mechanism for them to to get upstream. This, what you're looking at, these two pictures are what they call an eel ladder. And you'll notice that it's almost like short pieces of PV bike. And it gives the eels some traction to traverse up the dam. Now, the issue with us is that we believe there's too much of a vertical between the spillover and the top of the dam for the eels to traverse even using something like this. But this is one off, one of the options that was on the table, the eel ladder. So we have to, you know, kind of look at this as far as the slope and does the slope provide us the ability to to make something like this or is there an alternate method that we might be able to use to get those juvenile juvenile eels into the reservoir itself? I bring you into the recreation plan. The recreation plan has been a significant area of contention on the part of not only DEC but the town of Gildon as well. And, you know, obviously, there's a, there's a couple of reasons for this. The entities would like to see a sort of nature hiking trail established on the area of the reservoir that bring it close to, bring the, that trail close to the banks of the reservoir. The original plans were that DEC would provide financial assistance in its creation. But through later meetings, they withdrew that offer and they were putting it solely on the city to provide those trails. The town would obviously enjoy the option of having the trails. But the issue is that the city would have to foot the bill for the trails for the town to use. I think from, you know, my law enforcement background, I think one of the things that we need to remember is that this is a drinking water source. And if we allow, you know, the public to come near it or to traverse even the outer banks of it, I think we're putting ourselves in a situation from a city standpoint that that's something that we don't want to address. You know, Troy has the Tom Hannon, they don't allow, you're not supposed to fish from the shore there. There's no hiking trails there, so, you know, I don't understand why we wouldn't be able to have a similar setup for that. So we've kind of, you know, through Michelle, had her channel the information back to DEC and the town of Gildon to say, this isn't something that we're interested in to pursuing it at any point in the the conversations. So some of the other items, 401 Water Quality Certification Plan, that's really what FERC uses to drive what we're going to do moving forward. And how do we answer those studies? A lot of them, maybe the studies that we talked about already. The invasive species plan, Eurasian milfoil, what other, other invasive species that may come into the reservoir through the tributaries. Zebra mussels are big in the area and not specifically in our reservoir. We know Lake George, Serenac Lake. You know, some of the bigger lakes in our area have that problem. There's going to be site visits and public meetings we'll have to have as part of, as part of the relicensing. We'll have to review and respond to application deficiencies. We've already gotten some feedback from FERC on our original application, asking us for more information based on what we've put in the the plan itself. And then the watershed protection plan, which is actually, you know, a whole separate conversation. This is, the watershed protection plan is how do we protect any of those nutrients and chemical runoffs coming from the areas that are outside of our reservoir but in that watershed area that would, you know, obviously adversely affect our our water quality? And the estimate of all the post filing support is two hundred and thirteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So, you know, when you put it all together, between the settlement, the pre-licensing and the post-licensing, we're talking about three hundred and eighty one thousand dollars, just a little bit over as far as the cost that we're going to incur as part of this process. Now, again, we're not specifically talking just for relicensing, there are studies that if we didn't have a hydro, we would probably want to do these studies anyway, just strictly from a water quality standpoint. You know, we've already been, you know, promised from FRB that we will be given, you know, some funds to to accomplish some of these studies. We're also reaching out to other areas, Congressman Taco specifically, to see if we might be able to get some funding through them as well to address not only the FERC relicensing, but the water quality in the reservoir. So the reason we did this, the reason I did this presentation is, you know, there's going to come a point in time where we need to start these studies. We've, we've gotten, you know, the money set aside right now through the the promise from FRB that they would fund that. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page moving forward and we have the ability to start moving forward on on some of these studies. So Mayor and Joe, I'll turn it back over to you.
What was the bond that we we approved back in, oh, these was last year sometime, do you remember Amanda?
I don't off the top of my head, but if you give me a minute, I'll look it up.
Because we did have a ballpark estimate about what this was going to cost back. I can't actually remember the the timeframe, but I know it was last year somehow when we first started this, this whole process.
What is the timeframe for all of, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Barb.
What what is the timeframe for all of this? Is there like, what like, what is the deadline or is there a set deadline by when all of this has to be completed?
Well, the the settlement obviously would probably be something that we start within the next couple of weeks, just to start those conversations up again. We know that we're going to have to do the eel sighting study, we know we're going to have to do the hydrologic study. So, you know, those we can start right away. The issue that we're going to have is the water quality study with the the DO, which requires us actually to do sampling at different levels in the lake and how does social distancing prevent us from doing things like that? But I think in a perfect world, we we probably would have been having the conversation that we're having right now in the first April meeting to get the okay to kind of move forward on this. But because of the COVID stuff that we're dealing with right now, that's the situation that we're in is, it's given us some time to to start having these conversations.
Yeah. Sorry. The the original bond was for six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, but that included the FERC relicensing as well as the hydro electric upgrades.
That was for the pumps.
I'm sorry, there was some noise, I can actually hear your question.
That was the electric pump, right? And I think that was a hundred and five thousand or something?
I believe that sounds about right.
I think that was for the interconnect there.
Manans?
No, the, I'm sorry, the hydro interconnect. So the the upgrade of the hydro to the full capacity.
Oh, okay, but that was also for the electric pump, wasn't it? The motors?
I don't know that the pump was.
All right, well, we can find out, we can break, we can break that down a little bit. That would be helpful if we broke it down to see if we're sort of on the right path that we we expected to be on.
Mark, I got a quick question here with Michelle and her work. I know we're all adamantly against having Gildon have access to our reservoir for any recreational uses. Has she done anything anywhere else?
I know when, um, the town had this happen with Clifton Park, when they were going through their, uh, comprehensive plan and recreational uses to the reservoir that we have there this time. That against them to try to gain access to the reservoir. Any, has she had any experience with that? I'd love to get, uh, the guys from the town to talk to us on it, on their success, you know?
Yeah, I think the, the recreation aspect of this is, is kind of new. I don't want to say it's new to Michelle, but the emphasis that the town and that DEC is putting on it is kind of new. Um, usually when you're dealing with a water supply, any pushback on a recreation is just kind of taken. Um, it's almost like, you know, DEC sends a flag up just to see if anybody salutes. But, um, I think that, you know, having a partner with the town of Gilderlin, I think, you know, Michelle felt a little bit more pressure than she was used to, uh, when it came to the, the rec plan. I don't believe that this is something that, you know, my, my conversation with Michelle, she doesn't believe that FERC is going to honor, you know, any recreation plan. Number one, that's going to cost money for the city to maintain and to create. But number two, that, that may jeopardize the, uh, security of the, the water quality or the water source itself.
Thanks, Mark. That was, uh, that was good. Does anybody else have any questions? Barb, Pete? Want to move along then? I, I can't tell if anybody's talking or, um, or we're, we're okay. We're all set. Then we'll move on. Anything else under reports of officers or committees? Joe, nothing? All right, then we'll go on to old business.
Your Honor, I do not believe we have any old business this evening.
Okay. Thank you. What about, we'll move to move, uh, new business?
Under new business, we have resolution number 9744. The Council of the City of Water of Lead hereby accepts the bid and awards the contract for the Ninth Avenue Water Replacement Project to Tech Industries LLC with an address of 20 Heather Ridge Road, Troy, New York, 12180, in the amount of $485,335. The lowest responsible bidder in conformance with the specification. And Mayor Charles V. Patricelli is hereby authorized and directed to execute a contract between the City of Water of Lead and Tech Industries LLC.
Uh, Your Honor, I'll make a motion that we move on this resolution.
I'll second that.
Thank you. A discussion, who's going to talk on this? Joe? Mark, you want to go forward? Uh, you take it after the bid openings and, I mean, it seems like Boyer, Dave Boyer first. But I'll let you take it forward here.
Okay. Yeah. So, uh, we received bids on the, um, LS LRP project. We did the opening on the 17th, uh, of November. Uh, we received bids from, let me just get the listing here. So I give you the all inclusive list. Tech Industries, Louisie Brothers, Angel Construction, American Evergreen, and Trinity Construction. Tech Industries was the lowest bidder at 485, 335. Their, um, their talents and skills were assessed by, um, our engineer, uh, Dave Boyer from Weston and Sampson. And he concurred that the role bidder should be, uh, in his opinion, the low bidder should be awarded, uh, Tech Industries. Um, and we, uh, brought that to this point here with the resolution, uh, to move forward on the project.
This is, uh, this, this here is the, uh, going to be bonded, correct? Um, Mark?
That's correct. So part of the bonding process is going to be a secret review, uh, which we'll have to read probably uh, maybe next council meeting or next week. And then we'll be able to move forward on the bonding. And then a portion of this, um, will be reimbursable through the lead service line replacement program.
Okay. And again, just to, just to remind, we, we do not have a number yet of how many lead lines we're going to be replacing on Ninth Avenue. Is that correct?
That is correct. Uh, the current COVID crisis is, crisis is in, uh, a delay here moving forward as to, you know, obviously we don't want our staff entering houses and I don't think the residents want us entering houses either. So we're kind of waiting for further direction from the state as to how to move forward, um, from an essential standpoint.
Okay. There any other? Are there any other questions on this?
No.
No. Well, that's to clear the floor.
Councilman Torincello?
In favor?
Councilwoman Diamond?
In favor?
Mayor Patricelli?
In favor?
Your Honor, the next order of business is resolution number 9745. The Council of the City Ward of Lead hereby authorizes that the annual estimate for the fiscal year 2019 be amended in accordance with the attached budget line transfer form.
Uh, Mayor, I make a, a motion that we move, move on the resolution.
I'll second that.
Okay, I believe this is you, Amanda?
Uh, it is. Uh, I actually sent out a revised one shortly before the meeting and I apologize about that. I've been going back and forth with, um, our auditor discussing some things, but anyhow, um, this is just an annual thing that we do every year. If lines have been over expended for the previous year, we, we, um, approve transfers to make sure that everything is in line and nothing is over budget. Technically, uh, for the previous year.
Can you, uh, review that spreadsheet a little bit? I don't know if, Mark, you could put it up there, but, um, can you go over it a little bit, Amanda? Just to give it a little bit of an explanation of what, what line items were more, uh, over expended or under expended?
Sure.
Just for the record, anyway.
Uh, I, I'm going to give a full presentation on 2019 next meeting. Do you still want me to go through it now?
Briefly, yes. If you could, yes.
Sure. Sure. Uh, so, uh, there's three different funds that we do budgets for, the water fund, the sewer fund and the general fund. Uh, the first grouping that's on the attachment is the sewer fund and, um, we didn't spend. I, I don't like to say we didn't spend our contingency because we're moving it to other places. So clearly it was spent. Uh, but it wasn't, um, moved during the year. So we're moving it now. Um, so we're hitting the, sanitary camera study. There was a study done in the sewer, uh, in the sewer lines in 2019, um, to see where we needed to, um, to, to improve our sewers. Uh, so we needed an extra $4,700, $4,750 in there. Uh, the Albany County Sewer District, uh, is that we, we do every year with Albany County. We, all of our sewer flow goes through them. Um, it needed an extra 345. The retirement for the sewer fund, we had started budgeting just last year in the sewer fund for retirement, although it doesn't have any dedicated employees. Um, the sewer fund has, uh, costs associated with it. For example, I, part of my cost goes to the sewer fund. I, I work out of the general fund and my salary comes out of the general fund, but a portion of that is sent to the water fund and the sewer fund because I also do stuff for those two funds. So we, we only put 25,000 in, we needed a bit more. So we're adding 6,375 dollars to that. And, uh, we are also increasing our bond principal payment by $15,065. Uh, because we put it into, we, at, at the time we did the budget last year, we didn't have the, the bond schedule for the water and sewer fund. So we had it in bond interest. If you look at that, we're, we're actually decreasing the bond interest and we are increasing the bond principal payment. Uh, so that's our sewer fund, uh, for the water fund. We are increasing water engineering projects. $18,200. Increasing overtime, $4,700. We're increasing taxes, supplies, consultants and water memberships by $50,500. And, uh, the reason for that particular line, uh, is Gilderlin taxed us a lot more than we were anticipating. Uh, as we all know, we are in a, an assessment challenge with them currently. So uh, we had to increase that line. Uh, we also increased the health insurance line, uh, $16,800. And, um, as I had said with the sewer fund, we had to change the amount for the bond principal payment. Same thing for the water fund because we do these budgets at the same time. We didn't have the full schedule. Have to increase that $8,300. And we increased transfers to our reserve accounts by $10,000. And to do those, we decreased, um, hydro dam and reservoir engineering, employee retirement, and, uh, we increased the water flat rate. Because we had pulled in more revenue than we had anticipated, uh, as we had done more audits last year of water and sewer accounts. Moving to the general fund. This is a long one. Let's see, we increased attorney supplies, $3,200. This is for, um, attorneys that are outside of our, our in-house counsel. Uh, we increased, uh, court awards and settlements for $7,000. I don't know if I'm allowed to specifically say what those were for. I can get back to you if I'm allowed to say that. I'm not sure. We increased police overtime, 3,000, or 30, $31,800. Police special, special wages, $41,300. Police department promotional account, $4,000. Police department purchase of equipment, $8,500. Police department vehicle maintenance, $70, $7,600 and police operational supplies, uh, $3,700. Some reasons for that include, uh, we purchased a vehicle from Green Island. As you know, some of our vehicles are, um, a bit older and sometimes they, um, need more repairs than we originally anticipate. Uh, along with that, if, if a car is in, um, an accident, it will, it come, the maintenance fees come out of that particular line, uh, and you don't necessarily anticipate that. We increased, uh, again, in the police department, another $15,300 for, uh, T88 expenses, which are, um, expenses that are paid for through, uh, police seizure phones. Uh, it's required now that we report those in the general fund instead of in the trust fund, which is something we had previously done. So I moved those expenses over. Uh, moving on to the fire department, uh, we are increasing fire overtime, $26,000. We are increasing purchase of fire department equipment, $4,400. I don't know what that was for off the top of my head, uh, but I can get back to you on that. Uh, I think it might've been actually, uh, there were two firefighters that needed, uh, new, um, coats and jackets, because they're, they're, um, fireproof coats and jackets. They, they have a timeline. Uh, they have an expiration date and they need to be updated. So I believe that's what that was for. Next, we had to increase the humane society, uh, agreement line, $5,500. Uh, we had some dogs that were kept, uh, at the humane society. They were dropped off down there and either they weren't picked up or they were picked up late and, uh, we get charged for that. Uh, we had to increase the building department salary, $10,000. We took on Nick last year. Uh, he is our new zombie properties guy and he was new, I believe in September or October. I don't recall. But that, that was for his salary. We increased the highway foreman overtime and the highway labor MEO salary overtime, $4,300 each. The highway foreman, the highway department in general took over a lot of the, um, duties of the recreation department. When our recreation leader, um, left last year, so they had, they had some extra overtime because of that. Uh, we are increasing permanent highway improvement, $336,600. Uh, now that's not as scary as it sounds. That in particular is for, uh, chips. We, we actually get reimbursed from New York State for this money. It was previously reported in a capital project fund. It is now reported in the general fund. So I had to move it over there. We did not budget for that in 2019 and we, we won't budget for it because you don't know how much you're going to get. But we, we will be reimbursed for that. There's a line increasing $169,000 for on the other side, uh, because, and it's only 169,000 because we, we still have $100,000 to get from the state. We're still waiting on it and, um, $64,000 of that was incurred after we were allowed to, uh, apply for future funding. Uh, we will get that again in the future, but we didn't have it for the 2019 filing date. Um, moving on, uh, some help is increasing $4,700. We had a lot of kids this year. So we're increasing that line. Uh, road salt were increasing $11,900. This is because there were a lot of storms, uh, in 2019 that required a lot of salt, uh, not necessarily, um, big storms, although there were, there were actually, I think, two storms in which we had snow emergencies last year, but, um, they, they had, they used a lot. Um, our street lighting went up $11,000. Our recreation leader overtime, uh, went up $3,500. As I mentioned, uh, Bob left in, uh, I think it was late September, early October, somewhere in there. Um, and he was doing stuff to, to get prepared to leave and, um, so his overtime went up a bit. We increased, it, it's a line called grass cutting contract, but it's actually just park supplies, $2,600. Uh, the parks were a major initiative of, um, a committee, a parks committee, uh, led by, uh, our mayor. And, um, so, so we started doing quite a bit in our parks. So we had to increase that. We also increased our year round staffing, $3,600. Uh, this was due to, again, our recreation leader left. So we now have, uh, a full-time, but not full-time, but he's, he's sometimes worked full-time hours, uh, person in, uh, watching over the dome and, and that sort of thing. We're increasing the street light LED project, uh, $110,300. Uh, we're getting some of that back. We've already received some of it. Um, I believe we're getting 80,000. We're getting some of that back. We've already received some of it. I believe we're getting $80,000. We're increasing other home community service employment, $2,700. Our payment to the employee retirement system, $6,500. We're increasing FICA, $800, $8,100. Medicare, $2,300. Workers' comp medical costs, $80,900. We were paying the first $50,000 of every claim that came in, so it's kind of like we were self-insured and we were still paying the really high premiums, so we weren't really getting any benefit from that. So as we all know, we moved to being self-insured in 20, January 2020. We're increasing our health insurance costs, $6,890. Our co-pay reimbursement, $44,100. This is to some miscalculation on on what the premiums were going to cost. And we may have paid for some employees that weren't actually still employed here and we weren't able to get credit back on them. And we are also paying or we are also increasing our principal and bond payment, $47,100. And we are increasing the transfers to various funds by $30,000. On the flip side, we're increasing a bunch of revenues. Pilots, sales tax, franchise tax, interest on deposits, workers' comp recovery. Ambulance revenue was a big $75,000. Mortgage tax was 45 grand. As I had mentioned, we're getting some of the CHIPS money, which is 169,000. There's still another 100,000 for 2019 to come and another 64 on top of that for 2020. The other big ones. To do, sales tax was $250,000 more in 2019 than we had projected. And we're decreasing some some expenses. Appraiser costs, City Hall, Port, Police, Power, and Miscellaneous Building Costs, Lease Costs, Budgetary Oversight Continuencies, Police Salaries, Fire Salaries, Fire Operational Supplies, Fire Medical Supplies, Highway Salaries, Rec Leader Salary, and Interest on Bonds. All those decreases are $220,000 and the increased revenues are $731,000. Our total general fund change of $951,700.
Amanda, does anybody have any questions on that?
Yep.
Barbara, Pete, you're all set?
No, not at this time, there.
But you always get back to Amanda later if you have. I just take a look at it.
We we will.
All right. If there's no other further questions, I'll ask the the clerk to call a roll.
Councilman Torcello in favor.
Councilwoman Diamond.
In favor.
Mayor Patricelli.
In favor.
Your Honor, the last order of new business this evening is Resolution Number 9746. The Council of the City Water League hereby authorizes participation in the New York School and Municipal Energy Consortium for cooperative energy purchasing services for electricity and further authorizes and directs Mayor Charles V. Patricelli to execute all required agreements and documents that are necessary and appropriate for this purpose.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we move on this resolution.
I'll second it.
Hey, thank you. Mark, do you want to do this one?
Sure. So we had talked earlier, probably the last two or three council meetings in regards to maybe shopping around and getting a better rate on our energy, specifically our electric, because I think we're getting a pretty good rate on our gas right now. So Jordan had actually reached out to the City of Cohoes to see what they do. We kind of ran into a an issue from a procurement standpoint, how the best way for us to handle this was. And we recently found that the Anandaga Courtland Madison Bosse's actually has a municipal energy consortium that goes out there and actively bids to energy suppliers every three years to achieve better rates for both municipalities and school districts. The Waterloo City School District is already enrolled in this and the Cohoes School District, as well as the City of Cohoes, are enrolled in this consortium as well. So there's 156 school districts, 16 municipalities. There's actually seven fire districts that are involved in this as well. One of the things that I was concerned about is that there's there's $500 service fee for each account. Now, it seems like a lot, but one of the things that you have to realize is right now we have 53 accounts with National Grid. The City Water Lead has 53 separate accounts with National Grid. So some of those accounts are combined on one bill, but a majority of them have their own bill. So just tracking the bills as they come in, doing the assessment on it to make sure that we think that the billing is correct, and then processing each bill for payment is really a cumbersome project for our purchasing department. What the consortium does is they actually get our bill and they compute what we're going to pay, basically similar to what we do on a residential budget plan with National Grid. They compute what they think we're going to pay through the year and they bill us through the year and we pay them. They pay National Grid, we pay them. And they do the audits on every single bill that comes in to make sure that we're getting billed correctly, billed at the right rate moving forward. And they actually have a program where they contract with Troy and Banks and they do audits with Troy and Banks. So we actually pay NYSMEC in six equal payments. And then that last payment, they'll see where we are in relation to our actual usage versus what they said we were going to owe them in that sixth payment. If we underpay, they'll send us, if we overpay, they send us money back. So, you know, that's kind of the the invoicing process here. The the only issue that we need to look into, and I apologize because it seems like we're dragging our feet here, but we're we're having issues getting National Grid to contact us. And I think the reason for that is because we're trying to consolidate the number of accounts that we have, so we don't endure that $95 or $500 service fee, depending on the size of the account. So anything over 25,000 kilowatts is considered a large account. Anything under that would be a small account. So you can see here on our larger accounts, we have all of our streetlights, City Hall, the firehouse, Senior Center, the dome, filter plant, garage, and pump station. So you can see out of the 53 accounts we have, only eight of them would be over that that threshold and would incur the the $53 charge. So the issue is, is that, you know, for the smaller accounts like our traffic signals, and we actually have an account for the gazebo, the Sixth Street gazebo, that's a separate account. We have a separate account for the lights in Sixth Street Park. We have a separate account for the welcome sign on First Street. So we're trying to see if we might be able to consolidate these into one account. Each traffic light in the City Water Lead has its own account. So we're looking to see if we might be able to combine the accounts. We want to carve out the gas. We don't want to go to them for gas because we're certainly currently getting a better rate on our gas now than we than they could offer us. So we need to measure whether the service fees will cancel out cancel out any of the savings that we have. And we're still going through that assessment. The important thing is we can't, we can't really compute that until we figure out how many accounts National Grid will allow us to consolidate this too, and then we'll be able to go back to them to figure out, you know, the the cost benefit analysis. One of the attractive things is the streamlined billing process and the auto audits. When I talked to Mike DeRocher in the City of Cohoes, he said they actually saved one full-time employee by going this route. So, you know, with, you know, the cost savings that we would hopefully incur if they let us to consolidate, let us consolidate our accounts, I think it's in our favor. Unfortunately, I don't believe that we're in the position now, although I just did get an email from Jordan who reached out to our contact, Sean Joyce from NYSMEC, who said that we can actually go out and see what rates they'll offer us. So what happens is they bid these contracts every three years. We would actually be entering the third year of the contract. So when you enter the contract midstream, the vendors are actually given the ability to go out and refresh their pricing. So right now it's between 20.025 and 0.035. I'm sorry, 0.035 and 0.045 kilowatt hour. That's the rate that they're getting right now. Because we enter midstream, they would actually give the vendor the opportunity to refresh and look to see what he may want to charge us at that point. So it may not be the 0.45 that these calculations are done in. But what I did was I took some of the accounts and used totals and then put them on an average to see what our our, excuse me, our savings may be. And you can see on some of the bigger account like streetlight, streetlights, we'd save about $8,300 in a year. But then you see some of the smaller accounts like the Sixth Street gazebo, we would save $10.95, yet we'd pay a $95 service fee for that account. So it really behooves us to see what we can do to get these number of accounts down and consolidated before we move forward at any point in time here.
So are you asking us to table this resolution? Are you asking us to? I mean, table the resolution until you get some further information? Or are you comfortable?
I'm sorry, Pete. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, no, that's, go ahead.
Yeah, we're hoping that, you know, we got an email from Sean Joyce today, and Jordan, correct me if I'm wrong, but Sean said that we can actually go out and they'll actually have the vendor refresh the pricing now to see what kind of rate we can get, which will get us a better idea of what our savings. I use the high end of the range that he gave us, but he might be able to give us a better idea of what the savings are now. Of course, you know, if we are able to consolidate our accounts and we go with them, once we have the resolution passed, he'll actually have to go out and refresh again, so we may not get that same rate. But unfortunately, I don't think I'm in the position now to to, you know, make a recommendation one way or another until we can get, you know, get word back from National Grid, who's, you know, it really depends on what you ask them, how long it takes them to to respond to us. I'm assuming that there's got to be a reason why we have three separate accounts. I just don't know if on request they'll let us consolidate them down to a smaller number of accounts. But I would say right now, as it stands, a $95 service fee for some of these smaller accounts would certainly cut into the savings that we would be able to recognize. Mark, do we? I'm sorry, go ahead there.
Mark, do we have to give NYSMEC?
We don't, but, you know, really, I think, you know, part of the part of the attractiveness of this is that we limit the number of bills that we get on a specific year. So now we're getting some NYSMEC bills, we're getting some National Grid bills, and then we're getting National Grid gas bills. So I think that kind of limits the attractiveness of this if we don't send all of our electric accounts over there.
And we also want to find out if we can consolidate some some bills with NIMO, right?
That's correct.
I guess.
I I can't see.
Go ahead.
I can't see NIMO consolidating their their their, you know, a meter is a meter and to them, that's a bill. I I've never had luck with them when I was at housing. They were able to consolidate their statement. But each on that statement, they had, we probably had probably 35 or 40 bills ourselves. And they just gave us a breakdown of each bill. But that was just like one statement. Every every month they would send us 35 or 40 envelope with the the same, you know, the same material in it. But
Yeah, that's what I have right here. This is this is the accounts, and these aren't all the accounts. This is probably a third of the accounts that we have.
Right.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, would you entertain a motion just to table this? I think I think it's a great idea. But I think we might need a little bit more information before we move forward. Would would you entertain a motion that that we just table this for for the next meeting or or as soon as possible?
Well, we we have one next week. Do you feel, Mark, that we the the tabling would change anything? It's just the amount of the of the I mean, we if we if we find we can't and we find we there, some of the the numbers are not, let's say, a savings, you don't have to, you know, let's say, go forward with the contract. All right, we can actually just
That's correct. Well, that's, well, that's Right. And it would also give us the ability to reach out to the company to see what the rates are right now. Maybe give us a better idea of what the actual savings would be so we can reassess that moving forward and hopefully have it prepared for next week's meeting.
Okay.
So one of the other things, one of the other things, part two, would be if you're saying we're into the third year of this do we have to do this? I I think it ends in, what, June? Do we have to redo this in June? April of next year?
No, we would, yeah. So we would be in it until April of 2021. And then we would do another through agreement from 2021 through 2024.
Right, okay. So is it recommended now to go ahead, proceed with this, get the rates, and if the rates aren't successful, then we rescind it?
Yeah, I'd like to recommend that, you know, we will this, give us another week to see if we can get some more figures, have those conversations. I've sent Joe Pallone, who's our contact, three different emails asking him to get back to me. I haven't heard back from him. Obviously, he's got other stuff to worry about than the City of Waterloo. So, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, if I get a couple extra days, I'll be able to get an answer from the consolidation standpoint and then do a true cost savings analysis. I'm probably going to have to pester Amanda for a couple of days as well to get all the accounts and all the bills for all the accounts in order to do an accurate cost savings or cost benefit analysis.
So you are asking
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
No, you're saying you are asking to table later next week.
Yes, yes, please.
Yep. Good information, a good a good path and and everything. And and I think we should talk more about the gas later. I think, you know, I don't know if we need to stop thinking about whether or not we can go, you know, I'm sure that we can actually go out for gas somehow. You know, for the next three years or whatever it is that we're looking at, as if we were looking at it from a bulk rate before. But okay. Good idea. All right, then, seeing that we're asking it to be tabled, unless the 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 motion be withdrawn or is that the the protocol now or what?
Yeah, I guess I guess I'll withdraw my motion that we act on it this week and we'll adjourn till next week or as soon as possible thereafter.
Barb, you seconded. Is that okay with you? All right, then we'll just then we'll just make that the motion be withdrawn. I'll put it on for next week.
Okay. Jordan, do we have to call a roll on that?
No, I don't believe that you do because we're not taking any formal action on the resolution. What Councilman Torcello did was he just withdrew his motion to move forward with the resolution. So for the purposes of the minutes that this resolution will be adjourned until the next meeting to be voted upon by the council or could be withdrawn at that meeting. But as of right now, the resolution is going to be adjourned to Mesa.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Mayor, that concludes the new business for this evening.
Hey. Hey. All right, there, we already went over probably appropriations accounting. Amanda, do you have anything else to, to discuss?
Just that I'm giving a presentation next week on two thousand nineteen, that's all.
Okay, well, stay tuned. We'll bring the popcorn. Is there anything else that anybody in the council wants to bring up?
No, thank you, ma'am.
No.
Just a couple of items that I had down here. We'll, we'll talk about a few of them. We did get an offer about the basketball court. We have to discuss that with regarding Clinton Park at some point. I'm sorry, Mayor. We brought this up at the department head meeting on Monday and I know Jordan and I were just looking for a few more specifics as to the gentleman who it might be and who would be doing the work. We probably will have to enter into a whole harmless on that with a person doing the work. So hopefully we can try to put that together with, if, with, not by next week, the week, the following. Excellent, thank you. We're also just the, we had just a couple of other little items is that we're, we're still having the discussions on the, on the, let's say, the status of the pool. I know we do have some work to do on the pool, but we do, we're going to be looking at that to see what work do we need to do and the extent of being able to say what that pool will be able to open. We are looking at, we, we consolidated or actually summarized a number of different programs for the city residents to be able to find sources of help in some way, shape or form. We're mostly concentrating on food, but we invite the food pantries of that sort. But we also are looking into some business opportunities in the sense of some of the programs that have been coming down from outside sources and they've been kind of been sending out to the various businesses for some help, for some help. I know the police, I, I believe, have been actively handing out masks. And I don't know, Chief, are they going to continue that program or is that something that's
Do you want your suit down?
I'm on me.
Want you on veto?
So, hi, good evening. So we have about a thousand masks left, so we're going to continue that until we're out of masks.
Good. Oh, I know it's very low. Thanks everybody for, for doing that. I don't have anything else and if anybody else has, else will go into a public comment period.
Okay. At this time, the council has authorized the public comment period. You have two minutes to address the council on any items you wish. Yes, that you state your name and address before you begin speaking.
Anybody want to speak first? I guess you can indicate or mark on me or something. Anybody?
So I just have one thing there. So I don't know if, I don't know if you've heard, but the friend from Troy Police Department died tonight as a result of COVID.
I did not hear that.
So it's, it was classified as a line of duty death and I just want to extend my thoughts, condolences to the City of Troy and, and the police department there.
That's awful. Thank you, Chief. Our condolences as well to the family and to the department. Did not know that. Very serious. Thank you, Keith. If there's no other further comments or any public comments, I'll, or I'll ask that the comment period be closed and ask that we have a motion to go into executive session. And Joe, I'll ask you to bring up the topic so that we can find out who should be on the, on the call.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we move into executive session.
I'm sorry, Mayor. You want me to bring up the, right now? Well, whatever, I guess, we, just the, just the, let's say, the items that they're general items that we have to do, the reasons for going into executive session.
Okay, Mayor, I just, if I could just intercede for a second, Mayor, I think just one, one of the issues that I'm aware of and I'll obviously let Mr. Lossovi to continue is to discuss a, an employment issue with respect to a particular employee, personnel issue. I know that's one issue.
Yeah, and the other ones we have here is to talk a little bit about the tax assessments of maybe future funding concerns. We have some staffing conversations. And let me see, I'm just trying to look at the other one. I just kind of go over some of the particulars of the micro program that we were discussing earlier tonight. There was a motion made and seconded. Clerk, call a roll, please.
Councilman Toroncello? In favor. Councilwoman Diamond? Mayor Petraselli.
In favor. I want to thank everybody for joining us tonight and I appreciate, you know, listening in and I, I believe the presentations were both helpful and informative. Our next meeting will be again next May seventh. We're going to be going into executive session and then, then from there we'll close the meeting with that. So we're going to log off and say goodnight and I believe you'll be sending out a link again, Mark, for us.